Hello.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Good evening.
Yep. We're going to go ahead and give it about another minute. There's still folks joining. It looks like everybody has. Yeah, I spoke too soon. Give me another 30 seconds and let these folks in. Okay, I do have 7:31 on my clock and today is October 13th. I can't believe that. Anyone else who does join, I will just admit them as they arrive. But at this time, I'm going to go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. And so with that, if everybody could please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, if we could just take a moment for all the council members to unmute so the clerk can call roll.
Cannon.
Here.
Ed Metz.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Bessetti.
Here.
Diastis.
Present.
Suneika.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. It's been two weeks since we had our last city council meeting and it always feels like a decade whenever these two week periods go through. So before I begin, I'm just going to put out a reminder that public comment will be afforded to the public for joining us on this teleconference. So long as you provided your contact information and credentials regarding the subject matter for which you wanted to speak about this evening before the deadline, which is noted on tonight's agenda. Members of the public who are present in city council chambers listening to the meeting will also be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment in accordance with the procedures that are applicable to public comments at an in-person meeting of a city council. Namely, the members of the public must have signed in before the start of the meeting, which was at 7:31. Written comments, whenever they do arrive in advance, they will be submitted prior to the meeting and they will be read. So on that note, jumping right in, as we skip this page left blank here on the agenda. We'll note that the first order of business is to approve minutes from the previous meetings. And there are two sets of minutes for that. And the first one is from September 15th, 2020 Committee of the Whole. And for this, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a motion by show of hand? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first. And thank you, Alderman Bessetti for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes by show of hand? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved. It brings us to the next set of minutes, which is for September 22nd, 2020 City Council meeting. Is there a motion by show of hand to approve these minutes? Thank you, Alderman Bessetti for the first and thank you, Alderman Cannon for the second. For this set of minutes, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Well, seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
That makes seven in favor and then opposed, so those minutes are to approved. Moving on here to the next section of this evening's meeting. It's going to be a motion again to deviate like the last city council meeting. Again, this is to deviate for public hearings on the library's fiscal year 2021 budget as well as the city's fiscal year 2021 budget. Is there an alderman willing to make that motion? Thank you, Alderman Bessetti. Thank you, Alderman Cannon for the second. Is there any discussion on deviating? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll to deviate?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Ed Metz.
Yes.
Seven in favor and then opposed, we now deviate from this evening's agenda. Starting with the first item of the public hearing for the library's fiscal year 2021 budget. The city council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the library's fiscal year 2021 budget. The purpose of this hearing is to invite oral comments from interested citizens concerning the library's fiscal year 2021 budget. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at 7:36 on October 13th, 2020. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding the library's fiscal year 2021 budget? If so, please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom meeting. If you're not, please press star six to unmute. With and for the respective these issues, we will hold the floor open for a certain period of time. Seeing as though no members of the public wish to speak on the library's fiscal year 2021 budget. Let the record show that the public hearing closed at 7:38 on October 13th, 2020. This brings us to the next item of public hearing, the city's fiscal year 2021 budget. The city council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the city's fiscal year 2021 budget. The purpose of this hearing is to invite oral comments from interested citizens concerning the city's fiscal year 2021 budget. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at 7:38 PM on October 13th, 2020. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding the city's fiscal year 2021 budget? As the chair, I recognized that there isn't any member of the public wishing to speak regarding the city's fiscal year 2021 budget. So let the record show that the public hearing closed at 7:40 on October 13th, 2020. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the floor. So can I see by show of hand a motion to close the floor and return to the agenda? Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Thank you, Alderman Cannon for the second. Will the clerk please call the roll on closing the floor?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Seven in favor and then opposed. The record show the floor is closed. And we will continue on to the regular points on this topic. The next one being the mayor's report. And I just have a couple of quick items to mention. Like I said, during those two weeks off, which feels like a decade. We did have the opportunity, we as the council had the opportunity to participate and attend two ribbon cutting ceremonies. Welcoming two new businesses. The first was Phoenix Heating and Air Conditioning. It's an HVAC company located on Industrial Avenue. And the second was Taco Yarez. It's a nice family-owned taqueria located off of Gulf Road. And I appreciate all the members of the council who participated in both of these. And I wish those businesses a lot of success. And it's comforting to see new businesses come in to our community and still find that we are appealing and promising for their success. The other point I wanted to make is a little less lighthearted. I received an email from a resident yesterday afternoon in the fourth ward. Alderman Beniziano, you received it as well. A gentleman had had his campaign signs stolen. Now, they're not his campaign, but they're for the 2020 election campaign. And I found out from Chief Nowacki that this isn't the first individual that's had this happen to. I'm very disapproving of these activities. And I've been informed that we do have additional patrol out to monitor the situation and I do hope that it stops. And if anything, I can be hopeful that it's juvenile antics and not adults engaging in these sorts of activities. But with that, are there any ward reports this evening? Wonderful, Alderman Cannon, your hand was up, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of a couple of the residents that live in my ward and myself, we all took part in the electronic recycling and paper recycling event a couple of weeks ago. I think the reason I wanted to speak up, Mr. Mayor, is the residents that I talked to were thrilled with the way they were handled there. They were in and out in just a few moments. So I guess I would just like to make a shout out on behalf of some of my residents to Bill Sucecki and the rest of those guys and girls over there who did a great job with that event. I think they had over 300 people come in and used it. It was very successful and very efficient. Thank you.
Nice, thank you. I'm glad they took advantage of that. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to Alderman Cannon, a few thanks passing on from residents to the public works was and working through Public Works and Director Horn and some of the fire department, the Fire Department Police Department. There was a new solar powered stop sign put in at Cardinal and Sigwalt with the increased traffic to parks and the path during the pandemic. So thanks for that staff on our residents want to pass it on as well as with the construction work that's going on at the water tower. I'm Campbell. A residence reached out on that with the kudos for that as well as staff is looking into some of the lights. Might have been knocked on going into the backyard as well as some of the potential planting to enhance some of the surround there. Once we get into the spring and the work is done. And then also passing on a note, which I believe was in our Friday update last week is a resident was very pleased with the city for reaching out. They saw a huge increase in their water bill. The city did and proactively reached out to a resident in the third ward to see if there was any leaking going on because obviously we've discussed the water bills over the past and the staff came and knocked on their door. And they were glad to say that, nope, they had just done some major landscaping and it was from the additional watering that they had done. So they appreciated the proactive outreach from staff when staff noticed a significant increase. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Nice, thank you. Alderman Beniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, I did also receive that email and responded to that resident about their campaign signs being taken from the yard. So thank you for addressing that. So two additional items. I know I've had been communicating with Chief Nowacki on this topic for some time now. Just wanted to let more residents know that the traffic committee and Chief Nowacki are working on the area around the library and the stop sign on Pheasant. We know that tends to be a complicated little section in there and people running that stop sign. So it's still in the works and Chief in the traffic committee is still working on that to see what other solutions we can come up with. And then the second topic that I had is I've had a resident. Or actually kind of a small neighborhood of residents reach out recently about some dog noise complaints. And so I just want to reassure residents, you know, there are ordinances in place for these type of things. And I've spoken to Chief Nowacki about this. You know, our police department is here to assist you, so please feel free to call them and they will assist. You know, that's what they're there for, to help with these types of things. And we just wanted to convey that message again. So there are ordinances, you know, to help, you know, our neighbors for these types of situations. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Are there any other ward reports before we continue on? My show of hand here. If not, let it be known, there are also no signatures on our sign-in sheets. So there isn't any opportunity for public comment. So we'll move past that to items pending. And as we get into that, the first item pending is line item A, which is ordinance number 20-41. That's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance by show of hand? Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Thank you for the second, Alderman Beniziano. Is there any discussion on this item by show of hand? Alderman O'Brien, is your hand up for discussion?
No, I couldn't get it down. I was up for the motion, but I couldn't get it back down.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. So if there isn't any discussion, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, that ordinance is adopted. This brings us on to line item B, ordinance number 20-42. This time is to authorize the disposal of surplus city property, vehicles, and equipment along with information technology or IT. This is the second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. By show of hand, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us on to line item C, resolution number 20-r-100. And that's to award a contract for the purchase and installation of the smoke and fire and entry alarm detection and notification systems for 2809 Owl Lane. This was postponed from September 22nd city council meeting. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Diastis and thank you for the second, Alderman Cannon. By show of hand, is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
That makes seven in favor and then opposed, so this resolution is adopted. Moving on to the next order of business on the agenda. We arrive at the consent ordinances in for first reading. It consists of three items, items D through F. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? I will be pulling item F as staff is requesting a waiver of the first reading. So beyond that, does any alderman wish to remove either D or E at this time? If not, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the remaining two ordinances in one motion without debate. Can I have a motion for that? Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you for the second, Alderman Bessetti. The first one, line item D, ordinance number 20-00 is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Line item E, ordinance number 20-00 is to approve property tax levy abatement. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward? Oh, excuse me. My notes are all jumbled. The question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for final approval? Will the clerk please call roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
I believe this is, these ordinances are being moved forward for, to second reading.
For a second. Yep, you know what, I'm sorry. So this is all messed up here on my form. I apologize. So will the, the question is, shall these ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll on that?
Cannon.
Bill, yes.
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, these ordinance will move on to second reading. Now circling back to line item F, ordinance number 20-43 to amend chapter 22, business of the code of ordinances, temporary outdoor dining. Again, staff is requesting the first reading of this. Is there any discussion on this item and staff? If you feel the need to clarify why you're requesting the first reading be waived, feel free to jump in and share.
Mayor, can we get a motion first and then I'll have a quick comment?
Oh, sure. Feels like it's been decades. Can I have a motion to waive the first reading? Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you, Alderman Bessetti for the second. Manager Crumstock, go ahead.
Staff is actually asking for this waiver on this item to give us additional time to notify those restaurants that have outdoor seating. Obviously, we've been working on this for a little bit. We believe that the extra time to notify the businesses in the city is beneficial. We understand if you do not want to waive the first reading, it just becomes a little hard for us from the 27th to November 1st deadline, which was created by the old ordinance. So we appreciate just allowing us for the waiver and then passing this so the notifications can go out and making sure that we are communicating in a timely fashion to those local businesses.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. After that, is there any discussion from any council member on the motion to waive the first reading at this time? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for final approval? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes. With seven in favor and then opposed, this ordinance does move forward. Now circling back here. Ordinance number 20-43 is to amend chapter 22, businesses of the code of ordinance, temporary outdoor dining. Is there a motion for a final approval? Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Is there any discussion on final approval? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Ed Metz.
With seven in favor and then opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This now brings us on to new business. Line item G is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Is there any discussion on the bills on warrant for October 13th, 2020? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and then opposed, the warrant is approved. This now brings us on to the consent resolutions. And this consists of two items, items H and I. Does any alderman wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the two resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you for the first, Alderman Diastis. And thank you, Alderman Cannon for the second. The question is, shall all resolutions be adopted? Resolution number 20-r-101 is to award a two-year contract extension for the city audit services. Line item I, resolution number 20-r-102 is to award a two-year contract extension for the police pension fund audit services. The question is, shall the two resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Ed Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien. O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. Scroll so the monitor that all the viewers can see brings us to other business and reports. There are no mayor's appointments this date. There are no proclamations. Are there any reports provided by the city clerk this evening?
No, not tonight.
All right, thank you. Then that brings us further down to city staff reports. And city staff reports start with the community items of interest. For this, Manager Crumstock, I defer to you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, we do want to thank everybody who donated in our past blood drive, but we do have another one coming up for Thursday, October twenty-second here at City Hall between one PM and seven PM. And again, this will be in the council chambers. Due to the need for social distancing, appointments are really needed. Vitale can be contacted at eight seven seven two five eight four eight two five. Wearing a face covering mask is required. Walk-ins will only be accommodated if no scheduled appointments are present in the council chambers. The need really is out there and especially because now more schools are closed where they would do some of the blood drives. So again, that will be Thursday, October twenty-second, one PM to seven PM here in the council chambers here at City Hall. We do want to thank everybody who attended the last city market that was conducted on Saturday, September twenty-sixth. We hope to see everyone next year when we start back up the monthly city markets and they do start in May twenty twenty-one. Obviously, the US Census will continue on for the end of October now, but as a follow-up regarding the Census twenty twenty response rate for the city of Rolling Meadows, as of October fourth, the following numbers are provided. Rolling Meadows was at eighty percent. The state of Illinois was at seventy-one point one million and Cook County rate was at sixty-six point nine. So again, we're doing very well, but again, we do have a few more weeks into October that you can complete a census if you have not completed one at this point. As Alderman Cannon mentioned, we do thank everybody for participating in the Rolling Meadows Public Works and SWINK, Saturday, October third, Electronic and Document Destruction Event. It went very well. It's kind of chilly out there, but it went very well and we do just, we had roughly three hundred and sixty-one participants in the event. Regarding everything that's going on and also going back to what the mayor mentioned, we do have election twenty twenty coming up. Please make your vote count by mail during early voting or on November third. You can register to vote if you have recently moved to change your name or are a new voter and you will need to register to vote, obviously, coming up. The registration online by October eighteenth, in person or through the mail by October sixth. So you just missed that slightly. If you miss the deadlines, registration to vote during the grace period is from October seventh to November second, and that's also on Election Day. Voting by mail, you can vote by mail for the November third election and these ballots can be dropped off at designated mailboxes mailed by the US Post Office or dropped off in person during early voting hours at designated locations. Early voting, voting is available at designated Cook County elections, locations. And again, the election process is obviously open to all who are eligible. We do want to mention, please visit Cook County election website for additional sites, but the Cook County courthouse here in Rolling Meadows, obviously Palatine and Arlington Heights Village Hall are also additional locations that people can do early voting. On Election Day, polling places will be open from six AM to seven PM on Tuesday, November third. And again, if you have any questions for voting, please obtain or obtaining a mail-in ballot, please visit cookcountyclerk.com or call the clerk's office at three one two six oh three oh nine oh six. We also want to mention a friendly reminder, if you're having any issues from residents or businesses for paying your utility bill or your food and beverage payment, please contact finance@eight four seven three nine four eighty-five hundred or by emailing finance@cityrm.org. You may be able to be placed on a payment plan. And we do want to remind people that with the new system, it is smart enough that we do see the ebb and flows when people are using additional water, just like Alderman O'Brien did mention. But for any assistance, please call finance between eight AM and four PM, Monday through Friday. We do want to remind people, please shop, dine and order in Rolling Meadows. It is even more important now. During these times, it is significant to remember our big boxes, restaurants, and especially the small businesses in the area. We do want to mention that the Rolling Meadows Police Department and the Drug Enforcement Administration DEA has scheduled another national prescription drug take-back day for Saturday, October twenty-fourth, from ten AM to two PM at the City Hall parking lot, thirty-six hundred Kurtch Off Road. This is a great opportunity for those who have missed previous events or of who, or who have subsequently accumulated unwanted unused prescription drugs, pills only, no Sharpies or liquids will be. This is a way of safely disposing of those medications. For additional information or if you have concerns, please contact Chief John Nowacki at eight four seven three nine four eighty-five hundred. We also want to remind folks that here on the second floor of City Hall, we do have a Cook County Pharmaceutical Dropbox. They do check those every so often, so if you do have some additional or you miss a national take-back event, we do have an opportunity for you to dispose of those correctly. We do want to also thank people for doing the National Night Out. It was really amazing to see how many blue lights were out there, how many signs were out there. Obviously, as Chief Nowacki would say, it was almost doing the old-time National Night Out and representing in a feedback. And obviously, the city and specifically the police department greatly appreciated everybody's support during National Night Out this year. Saturday, October thirty-first, Halloween trick-or-treat hours for the city are from one PM to six PM. And again, what we will be putting out, probably the week after or before, I should say, Halloween, if your child collects a treat or you have a concern about something, we will have the usual pumpkin can here for disposal here at City Hall and the candy disposal container will be located at the front of City Hall. Obviously, we're coming up into early refuse set out begins on Monday, November second. Place refuse at the curb no earlier than three PM the day prior to pickup. And then we also want to mention to everybody that the Illinois Secretary of State has implemented new policies to allow drivers to stay safe and well and avoid long lines and crowds at the DMV. Drivers aged seventy-five years and older will automatically have their driver's license extended by one year. The new expiration date is their birthday in twenty twenty-one. All other licenses and Illinois IDs have been extended to February first, twenty twenty-one. License vehicle registrations will now expire November first, can be renewed online along with duplicate license and ID request placements. And if you want additional information, please visit the website at www.cyberdriveillinois.com. Obviously, with the changing in the weather, we do want to mention that the leaves are falling. Just a friendly reminder to residents, do not dump or blow them into the streets or down the sewers. We do have street sweepers working throughout the community still. And we also want to mention, because it is one of our e-news and views months, that have you taken a look at the October e-news and views. This is the sister publication for the printed news and views. Some of the topics are really just talk about the November election, the April twenty twenty-one election filing deadlines, new restaurant preview, and then responding to FOIA request. With that, those are items of interest with the one addition.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. Why don't we keep this going with you on the August twenty twenty financials?
Mayor, this will be Finance Director Melissa Gallagher taking this one on tonight. And in the packet, we've got our fiscal year financial results of operations as of August thirtieth, thirty-first, twenty twenty. In the packet is a large memo and detailed information. I wanted to kind of high level go through the memo itself and also some of the charts and graphs. The report that follows the memo does consist of the general fund, income statement, year-to-date available budget report, our general fund year-to-date revenue detail report, we have major revenue charts, our all funds income statement, which shows all the funds for the city, and our cash and investments report. In the memo itself, I'm going to review the general fund and also just make a few footnotes as I go along. In the packet itself, in the memo, we have as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty, which is about sixty-seven percent of the year unaudited. Our financial reports are shown as a cash basis or unaudited. And in the general fund is our largest operating fund. A couple footnotes here. So in the chart that we have in our memo, we show that we have the twenty twenty budget. And as a footnote to that, remember that this is the revised budget that does include our budgeted transfers. So there's a revised budget and that's what we're looking at in this memo. In addition to that, as of August thirty-first, it should be noted that this is just a snapshot in time of where we sit as of August thirty-first year-to-date. It is not a financial estimate as to where the city is at this point in time, but I did want to make sure that that was footnoted and we'll make sure as we go along, we'll footnote that as well. Year-to-date for revenues through August thirty-first, revenues are coming in at twenty-six point two million. And as part of that revenue stream would be the two budgeted transfers in, one for, from the health insurance fund of a million dollars and one from the liability insurance fund of five hundred thousand dollars. That does get included per our accounting standards in the budget and it also gets included in this financial report. So it will show you a little bit above the budgeted number and that's because those transfers were made. So year-to-date coming in for the general fund is twenty-six point two million or seventy-four percent of budget and expenditures year-to-date are twenty-five point one million or seventy-two percent of budget rounding. So when we're looking at the year-to-date surplus, it's one point one million. And again, this is not a financial estimate in terms of a forecast, it's just where the revenues are coming in for the general fund and where the expenditures are going out for the general fund. I also want to footnote too that this report does not have an estimate as far as fund balance estimates. We do save that for the budget book itself, for the proposed budget and estimate is shown in the budget book, but not in this memo. Recall too that the legal marijuana sales taxes did begin in July twenty twenty and we will receive the receipts in the month of actually October. We did just find out today that the receipts are going to be posted soon and we'll update the council as we move along through that. But I did want to mention that the way the sales taxes work for legal marijuana taxes, the three percent that comes to the city, you don't know that until several months later. Of note, internet sales are trending up, so it is a positive to the, to the city, the internet sales overall. Moving on through the memo itself, we've got the, again, the general fund revenues coming in, all in. We will provide some footnotes going forward, but remember that this is the revised budget. We did add this, this memo, to this memo, a sales tax category chart so that it does show approximately where all of the city's sales taxes are categorized. And in this chart, it, it does tell you that sales taxes are about eighteen percent of the total general fund revenues. And what's important to note is the three biggest drivers, again, drinking and eating places, general merchandise are our three biggest drivers to sales tax, accounting for nearly fifty percent of our total sales tax base. Moving on to expenditures, again, we're a little bit over budget and that's because of the fact that not only do we have a revenue in coming in for fire and police pension fund, you do have it going out for that as well, the same amount. And because we receive our property taxes in, you're also going to see a corresponding expense in your general fund. And so with that being said, we have the full, nearly the full amount for our pension funds in the expenditure side for the general fund. A couple additional expenditure charts in the general fund is to just categorize where salaries, pension items, contractual, transfers, and also supply items are categorized. And then for the general fund year-to-date expenditures, what portions and percent make up the general fund expenditures? We did footnote the inter-fund transfers for the budget. Moving on to the utilities fund, again, we're about eight percent below target for the year for the general fund, seven point two million dollars coming in for revenues. Again, that, it is important to note that thirty percent of our city's auto, our customers are on automatic bill pay. In addition to that, while we're receiving funds in from our auto pay customers, we are seeing people are making payments. We do have some folks, as City Manager Crumstock mentioned, of payment plans and installment plans, but overall, we are seeing that people are making their payments as much as they possibly can. And overall, we're about eight percent down on, on revenues. Expenditures are trending a little bit below budget and that's, that's typical for this type of year. We did, however, train, or delay some of the projects in the utilities fund, but overall, it's typical that you won't see all expenditures until most of the capital projects are completed towards year end. The refuse fund, another one of our largest operating funds, revenues are about one point two percent below budget and expenditures are trending just slightly under budget, about five percent. We have a city fund structure chart in the memo. We also included new to this report, unemployment data so that we can see the trend line data on that. We added a chart for that. Rolling Meadows area is eleven point seven percent. As we know, we, we don't have specifically Rolling Meadows data, but we have to go with what the Illinois Department of Employment Security provides. The current unemployment rate right now is eleven point seven percent and it's important to track that and understand where that's heading. Page seven in the memo shows the city's top ten employers. This is also data that is displayed in our city's audit every single year. It's important to know those employers and where they are in the city of Rolling Meadows. Finally, I want to point out in our cash and investments report, all in for the city's cat, unaudited cash position through August thirty-first, and this includes all funds. The city shows thirty-two point five million dollars across all funds. Larger share of the cash position does reside in the general fund and the utilities fund with about twenty-five percent in the general fund and then roughly about, between the refuse fund and the utilities fund, about twenty-five percent in that fund, in those funds. There's a lot of detail in the report. We wanted to just provide a high-level summary for the city council and residents as they're listening in and happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you Finance Director Gallagher. For this next one, traffic review committee report, I think I'm just going to throw a dart at a list of names and whoever lands on can have it. Director Horn, has your name next to it. Is this for you for September traffic report?
Yes, sir, Mayor. That's all me. Thank you. I don't have a lot to report. I would just tell you that this last traffic review meeting, we handled several issues related to signage and speed studies, specifically the Wilkie Road speed study, and we were able to resolve several of the issues and were able to get those off the list. So we're continuing to work towards emptying this list. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I have nothing else to report.
Thank you for that. And if there are any questions for any of these, remember this is not the time for discussion, but we can revisit them on matters not on the agenda. Then Park District Discussion Update, is this also you, Director Horn?
Yes, Mayor. This is just a staff report that myself and the city manager felt would be a good thing to provide on a regular monthly basis to just let you know where we are in the discussion process. So we had some initial conversations with the Park District as the report indicates. They are certainly interested in having those conversations. Our next step has been to secure the services of the city engineer to prepare a preliminary study of the buildable area on the thirty-two hundred site for future consideration. So that's where we're at at this moment and we will continue to update this report and provide it to the council on a monthly basis. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Looking forward to that on a monthly basis. So the Christmas tree relocation update has both your name, Director Horn, as well as Assistant Director Joel Charlton. Who wants to field this topic?
I, I think I'm here. I don't know if she's on the meeting. I had a conversation with her before we started the meeting. There's really, we had hoped to have- her before we started the meeting. There's really, we had hoped to have some conversation about this at tonight's meeting, but the item was put on the committee of the whole meeting. So this was really just an opportunity to present some of the information that had been requested at the last discussion, and we're providing this really just as a precursor to next week's committee of the whole discussion, where we will be able to update a little bit of the information from what we were able to provide in this packet.
Okay, thank you. And I do see she is on the call, but we can obviously go into great detail or greater detail at next week's committee of the whole.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So then that brings us to the sixth item here, which is October 20th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda. So for this, Manager Crumstock, I'll defer to you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. You have eight items that are on the draft agenda. It's going to drop down to seven, but being prepared for October 20th, Committee of the Whole Meeting is obviously the library budget. Executive Director Dave Ruff will be here to do a presentation. Then we will have another opportunity for the fiscal year 2021 city budget. Obviously, chamber support on business licensing, that's Mayor Gallows. Zoning Code Update, that is a discussion that we will be having with the city council now that it's been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then obviously, before it gets to you as an ordinance for acceptance, the water main ownership is going to be moved to November, so that would bring number four will now be the chipper program survey questions. New number six will be expansion of Police Department Social Services Outreach, Part Two. And then obviously, number seven is the holiday tree on city-owned property located on Kirchhoff Road. Allen Kirchhoff has what was just mentioned.
Okay, thank you for that. Then following the Committee of the Whole for the following week of October 27th, the draft agenda for that city council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, the draft that's before you, we have the second reading of the COVID-19 ordinance. We have the second reading of the property tax levy abatement. Then we would have our consent ordinances that we are talking about at this point in time, which would be the first reading of the next COVID-19 ordinance, and then the first reading of that zoning code update that I just mentioned from the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Pay some bills. Then we will approve and release the closed session minutes or in destruction of some of those tapes, potentially. Then we will have the award of contract for leak detection services. This is our annual look at our services throughout the city of Rolling Meadows, making sure that our system is buttoned up and we really don't have any leaks. Then we would have a resolution at this point in time for award of contract for the purchase and installation of protective flooring in the shop area at the Public Works. We will have a resolution to authorize purchase of rolled salt for the winter of 2020/2021 season. It's our annual distribution and resolution so we can make sure that we have enough salt to make it through the entire season. And then we do have a resolution for ITEP grant application for the Hicks Road Bike Path. And then obviously, we would have, at this point in time, we do have one reappointment scheduled for the police pension fund, then community items of interest, the September 2020 new business list, and then a Meacham Road update that obviously, staff and the mayor will start some conversations with that depending on how certain things go from some other discussions that we are now having. So with that, that would be the October 27th city council meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you, Manager Crumstock. That now brings us to matters not on the agenda. If there are any, please raise your hand now to address those matters not on the agenda. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a real quick recap from our October 5th Economic Development Committee meeting. I'm going to offer Alderman Veniciano also in case I miss any holes here. But real quickly through our summary, we did meet Monday, October 5th, and the key items from there was, there was a lot of discussion. We've talked about the website, the city-sponsored website called RM Business Buzz is a website that is going to highlight local businesses and shopping local for no cost to the businesses. It will have some logos on there and some additional information. That should be ready to be launched sometime this week is what we're informed at the meeting. So there was discussion too about a private web design company that's doing something similar. There was, the recommendation from the group was to keep private interests separate from government and endorsing anyone, so that individual is going to continue moving forward on theirs, and we'll revisit this in 2021 once both have experience under their belts. There was some discussion about Meet Chicago Northwest, which was, as we've had presented to us at the council before too, kind of a marketing and services arm that helps out several suburban northwest areas. There was just discussion because their president provided an update and synopsis to us at the prior meeting in September. There was just discussion over there about the spend from the city perspective, which is very minor, we learned, and the value for the services being received there as well. Attorney Wolf, as the city attorney, provided a summary of roles and responsibilities for the EDC, since there were several new members regarding what our roles were as a recommending body, and then also compliance with Open Meetings Act for agenda development and special meetings. And then last but not least, is for 2021, the group did decide, because currently, and it's happened for the last several years, is EDC bumped up against the Planning and Zoning Commission. So a lot of times, discussions were cut short just based on time parameters. So in order to avoid that going forward, starting in January, the group will be meeting on the first Monday of the month, starting at 6:00 PM still, to allow for further discussion since planning and zoning meets on the second Tuesday, is that we should not have to have any meetings cut short because of that. And then there will not be a November meeting as in the past every election year when Election Day falls on an EDC meeting. It has been canceled, so the next meeting won't be until December. That's all from I am Mr. Mayor, unless Alderman Veniciano has something that I neglected to mention.
Oh, thank you. That's, that sounds good. Those are interesting, exciting things. I'm glad that the committee decided to change dates in an effort to afford more time for discussion. I think that's promising. Any other matters not on the agenda? Manager Crumstock, I see your hand is up.
Yes, I just wanted to make one quick thing because it didn't fit in items of interest, but just so anybody listened to this on Channel 6, this is the first time that we are actually showing the video in the screens. It's just the same thing that you would have on your screen at this point in time. The slides only allow six to nine pictures if you actually have a video on that at this point in time, but I appreciate Westime and Kelly for spending some extra time. And if you can look at it, and this is how we would be doing it going forward, that it will be just like on Channel 6 as much as we can show on the screen.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock, for sharing that. Little backstory on this. So obviously, when we as a council are in these meetings, we're not watching the meetings, but a resident reached out to me and asked why they only get to see static logo of the city of Rolling Meadows and hear audio only. And I was kind of surprised and thought that they were just watching our Zoom meetings the same way, because it's digital, you can tap and tie right in, but we hadn't been, and now we are. So viewers at home do get to see anyone who is on video on these meetings, just like they were watching the regular council meetings. So that, that's very comforting to hear, and I appreciate them utilizing that technology because it's available. Any other matters not on the agenda? If not, then you'll see that there are five items with a request to go into closed session, and of course, it does require a motion and a roll call vote. The first item is to review closed session minutes. Another item is land sales, and then three items of personnel. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Thank you, Alderman Cannon, and thank you, Alderman D'Estes for the second. Is there any discussion on going into closed session? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Tanika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Diziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. Any participant on this conference bridge, either resident or press, be advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. So with that, I wish you all a wonderful evening. And council members and staffs entering into closed session, feel free to exit now and then jump on the next bridge. Thank you all.